Need to receive evidence of proper notice.
The County Board of Supervisors December 17th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places and posted on the county website on December 12, 2024. In addition, on Thursday, December 12, 2024, 3:00 AM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice and meetings to supervisors and media via email.
Cause our.
That constitutes proper notice.
Go call, please.
Brad Olson. Not here. Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wornow.
Here.
Emma LaGarvie.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Emma O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Frances Dumkinson.
Here.
Russ Arkin.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonaprise.
Here.
We have 14 out of 15.
Join me, please.
Pleasure, Bones.
Justice for the right of the United States of America and as the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Need a motion? I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
First, same sign. Need motion on matters of consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
I'll second it.
You got it seconded. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Public comment? Anybody that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none will move on. Presentation by Scott Allen, please, regarding the West Central Region.
Does it look like Scott? Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here before you tonight. My name is Susan Badke. And I am a senior planner and deputy director of the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Scott, we had two county board meetings tonight and he said, which one do you want to go to? I said, I'd love to go to Polk County. So you're stuck with me for this evening, but hopefully things are relatively quick and exciting for you. So we like to come here and present before you every year to give you an update. What have we been up to over the last 12 or so months as we are your regional planning commission? So again, the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. With me tonight, I also have Amanda Vath. She is a lending specialist in our office. And she's going to be coming up and presenting on the regional business fund aspect. So there's kind of two parts of this presentation. So regional planning commissions, West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, we were created in 1971. All regional planning commissions were created under state statute. So we have the state statute reference there. Really, our mission is to provide a variety of services, all really related to creating strong, healthy counties and communities. So community planning, we look at demographic data, economic development, grants. I've been speaking with some of your administrative folks about potential grant opportunities here in the county. For example, mapping, natural resources planning, public administration and transportation. And many of the things, as I was sitting in the audience here, I looked at your county board priorities. Many of those, it aligns very well with your priorities, housing, parks, broadband access. So many of the services that we provide align with those. As I mentioned, in the state of Wisconsin, there are nine regional planning commissions. So you can see them there up there on the map. We are identified as number nine. So the kind of the golden rod color up on the screen, we cover seven counties, including Polk and extending all the way to the east over to Clark County, covering St. Croix, Barron, Dunn, Chippewa and Eau Claire. So those seven counties. And like I said, there's nine in the state. We're number nine on the map simply because of alphabetical order, or I like to say they save the best for last. In terms of the regional planning commission, again, seven counties. And we are governed by a 21 member commission. So three appointees per county, which equals 21. The appointments are made by the county board. So your few folks made your appointments in April or May of this year. So every two years on the even year, appointments are made to our commission after the spring elections. There's also an executive committee of our commission. They really handle the administrative, kind of administrative functions of our committee, and that consists of one appointment per county. And so. I hear ours are 21 commission members. And so in Polk County, we do have one citizen representative. That's Mr. Terry Howar, your county EDC director. And then Supervisor Keith Karpinski and Supervisor Sharon Kelly also serve on our commission. And so those are your three members on our commission. Ms. Kelly also is the executive committee appointment for the county. And again, they really handle kind of the administrative functions. We are a staff of 15 in total. There's 14 full-time, one time part-time. Our finance manager is a part-time position. So we really, we have two administrative folks, nine planners, including myself. And then three folks that cover the regional business fund. And that's where Amanda is going to present and really share some details on the regional business fund. Amanda covers the western half of our region. And so she is the regional business fund representative that covers Polk County. Our goal really is to assist units of government in planning for, and this is derived under state statute, the physical, social, economic development needs of the region. And we do this in three ways. We try to serve as a coordinating agency or coordinating organization. So bringing different parties together to facilitate or convene. And also between federal and state agencies, we assist units of government in working on issues that occur at a regional level. And we provide technical assistance, advice and services directly to communities. Our service areas are really in four different kind of categories or four main buckets of services. The first being economic development, transportation, community development. And I would say economic development, transportation, those really are encompassed in community development. And then our fourth, conservation and mapping. And so just an example of some of the types of projects in each of those categories. Under economic development, you know, we do things such as regional economic development, planning and coordination. We work with our EDC directors quite frequently. So I'll get a call. It's been a while since I've gotten a call from Terry. I was just thinking, he needs to be giving me a call. He has to have some type of question for me, but we work with them very closely on different projects. Administration of revolving loan funds, project consultation, grant writing and administration. County economic and population profiles. And at your place tonight, each of you should have received a folder with some information in there. In there is the county economic and population profile updated for Polk County. So you do have that as a resource. Community and industrial park profiles, for example. In the transportation kind of service area, we do highway, rail, airport planning, safe routes to school planning, different transit planning, parking studies. And then I'll mention as well pedestrian and bicycle facilities planning. And so we're currently working with Polk County in your environmental services and your planning division on a county bicycle and pedestrian plan. And so that is one of the projects that we're currently working on in Polk County. Under that community development kind of category, comprehensive planning is kind of our traditional community development service. So we work with a number of communities on comprehensive planning. Now, many of these things, the county is doing themselves, right? You have the staff available. So for example, I was talking to administration beforehand and I said, what's the status of your comprehensive plan updated at county level? And that is scheduled for 2025. And in fact, your county planner is going to be really leading that effort in-house. However, many of your communities might not have those service, that staff available, right? And so that's where we try to come in and fill that gap. They might say, we need comprehensive plan update. We don't have the staff, the support to do that. That's where we really can assist with that. Zoning and subdivision regulations, other land use planning, hazard mitigation planning. So a planner in our office is really the hazard mitigation planning expert, has worked closely with your emergency services director and is actually in the process, I think, of finalizing that hazard mitigation plan for the county. What that plan does is it really sets you up for future funding opportunities under FEMA. So many of the plans that you do, it's good to do planning, but it also then sets you up. Your outdoor recreation plan that you just approved tonight, that sets you up for future funding opportunities under the DNR. So many benefits to planning. Under conservation and mapping, water quality planning, sustainability planning, lake management plans. So we work on that. Another mapping and other graphics specialized needs. So those really are four main kind of service areas at our organization. Just to highlight some of the projects that we've been working on in Polk County over the last 12 or so months. The Main Street Bounce Back Grant Program, you folks may have heard of that. That was, you know, dollars that came out under COVID relief dollars to really help generate more businesses on our main streets. And so we administered, they were $10,000 grants. And we administered in our seven county region, administered 860 of those. And there were 116 total administered and given out in Polk County. So that was over a million dollars that came into businesses in Polk County and helped locate. And I, you know, when I drive around, I do see many of those actually still in operation. So that's great when you see folks that located and continued and were able to successfully locate. Continue work on a broadband implementation group. So that's working with the PSE. That's kind of a regional broadband group that meets. Again, we kind of convene that and facilitate those meetings. Posted some regional downtown building renovation workshops. One of those was in Clear Lake and those were in June of 2023, very well attended. People were very excited to hear about how can we, our main streets are kind of our lifeblood of our small communities. How can we work to renovate? What types of funding and sources are there to renovate? Preserve some historic buildings that really are the backbone of our main streets. Prepared successful grant applications for a variety of projects, that bicycle and pedestrian plan that was at the county. We assisted with that along with the hazard mitigation. We've prepared that Polk County Hazard Mitigation Plan, currently working on a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the county. And again, that's in coordination with your county planner, but we were hired to do that. Have completed some safe routes to school plan. So how do kiddos safely get from their home to school? That's what safe routes to school really is focused on. Secured implementation to create some traffic calming kits of which were used in demonstration in the city of Amory. So that's one example where we took some cones and we did a demonstration of if you reconfigured the street, you know, how would that impact traffic flows to help kids safely cross and access the school? Also completed the Polk County Farmland Preservation Plan. Again, that was in coordination with your environmental services department. And assisted leading a discussion panel for three sessions of securing Polk County's future housing and talent attraction breakfast. That was held in April or March through May. I was involved in that and I'm pleased to say that I was involved in that. Those were really well-attended, very valuable events that really was spearheaded by Terry Howar of the EDC in coordination with Neil Klein with family-friendly workplaces. And together, they said, we really need, when we're looking at housing and its impact on our workforce and attracting people to come to our county, live here, work here, we need to share that information. How do we get folks? And so that was, that was really, really well-attended and I think really valuable for folks to hear. So originally, two sessions were planned. We held one in Amory and one in Osceola. And then they said, we have more people that are interested. So we did a third session in Luck. And so those were all very successful. Just to highlight in a little bit more detail, just a few of the projects. So the farmland preservation plan update project, again, that was to update the county's farmland preservation plan that had been adopted in 2014. So you're required to update it, get it certified by Department of Ag, Trade and Secure Protection, otherwise known as DAT cap. It identifies areas for farmland preservation. It's used to guide future policy and land use decision-making in the county. And the certified plan allows towns within the county to pursue farmland preservation zoning. So it sets it up. It doesn't raise own property, but it sets towns up to do that, to create tax credit opportunities and make properties eligible for those farmland preservation tax credits. Talked about this, this is securing Polk County's future events. Again, that really from a housing perspective. So I was here in the county 2019, so pre-COVID, talking about housing and what can the county do? And I think the county has done some great things surrounding housing and there's been lots of great conversations. But at these events, I was able to provide some updated demographic and housing statistics that came from the 2020 census. So we know the 2020 census, we complete those forms in 2020, but we don't get the data until 2024, I think is when we actually got it this year. So was able to provide some updated data and statistics on that and really focus on that relationship of housing to the workforce and attracting, retaining talent. So in terms of our operations, a quick snapshot of our organization budget as we kind of wrap up the year. We're almost to 2025, so we'll be entering a new budget cycle. But really, this is our, this is our budget, or about $1.8 million budget. Our sources of revenue, variety of sources. The one that I would like to point out is kind of the lighter green, so not the dark forest green color, but the lighter green color, which is the levy. And that levy comes from our seven-member counties. So on average, that 2024, it was at seven, it made up 17% of our revenue sources. Over the last few years, it's averaged between 15 and 20%. So 2024 Polk County's funding to our organization as part of that levy was around $38,000. 2025 Polk County's funding portion is about $39,000. So not a huge increase, but generally it's between 15 and 20%. But you can see there are other sources. We have contracts that makes up our largest portion. So when we have comprehensive plan updates that we're working with our communities or hazard mitigation plan updates, we enter into contract agreements for those specific projects. Real quickly, some benefits of regional planning. So we operate, we're a quasi-governmental agency, right? Here, we operate, we're a public entity. So we operate with public and fiscal accountability to our local governments. We offer a neutral forum for exploring and resolving intergovernmental issues. So we try to be a convener and a facilitator, but we, you know, so if there are two intergovernmental groups that are coming together, struggling on an issue, we're happy to be that convener and bring folks together. So if a community is struggling with an issue with the DNR or, you know, or DOT, we try to bring people together to talk through and work through those issues. We provide an opportunity to partner and leverage funds. So how can we bring multiple funding sources to get the project happen? We maintain a staff of professionals with decades of technical and programmatic experience. I think if you look at our staff, most of us have several years of experience and can provide that expertise. As I mentioned earlier, we try to fill that gap in planning. So again, some projects your planning staff here at the county is able to do, but many communities don't have that planning staff. And so we like to fill that gap specifically for smaller units of government in our counties. And we act as a repository of different data, different demographic and economic data. So what else should you know about us? I'm just going to leave you with this and then I'll invite Amanda to come up here and share a little bit about regional business fund. We share your same commitments, you know, as I mentioned, your county board priorities. Many of those are our priorities as well. And we share your commitment to the well-being of our region, our counties and our communities. We have the tools and the expertise to drive progress for the region and for our counties and our communities. We bring decades of experience and deep-rooted connections. So many, all of us actually on our staff live within our seven-county region. Many of us grew up in the seven-county region. One planner has been with the commission for over 21 years. So he's, I always go to him and I say, tell me the background on this and he usually has it. We serve a public mission. So again, we prioritize community impact. We work to leverage funds. We are willing to take on challenging tasks and have that multi-jurisdictional mission and drive. And we offer, try to offer unique services that aren't available elsewhere. So with that, I thank you for your time. I'll certainly take any questions after Amanda's done. But Amanda, if you want to come up here, Amanda Vath, again, she's our lending specialist in our office.
Thank you, Susan.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. As Susan mentioned, my name is Amanda Vath. And I'm the lending specialist with the regional business fund. And I recognize Toby Lemahue up here. Most of you might have known her or worked with her. We spend most of our time working on the contract that the regional planning commission has with the regional business fund. The regional business fund is a nonprofit and was created by the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to administer revolving loan funds in 1990s. The nonprofit, RBF, is staffed by the regional planning commission. So. Just going to tell you a little bit about us. So our, there's a nine-member board of directors for the regional business fund. You can see the nine board members on this slide. We cover the same seven counties as the regional planning commission. So there is one board member per county. Erin Mork, as you can see, is the representative for Polk County. And then there is our two at-large members, one that is appointed by the regional planning commission and one by the RBF. We offer, what we do is we offer low-interest loan services that provide an economic benefit to the region. Like I said, we cover those same seven counties, Barron, Chippewa, Clark, Eau Claire, Dunn, Polk and St. Croix. Toby and I split those counties and represent those counties. I represent the four western counties, so St. Croix, Barron, Dunn and Polk. Our funds are flexible and they can be used for a variety of business financing needs. We offer the seven programs as listed above. I won't go into too much detail about each program, but you should have a brochure in all of your packets or you can look on our website or ask me questions after. One thing is the listed programs, they do not compete with regional banks and credit unions. Rather, we're here to provide a source of gap financing even when needed. So. So this is just a little snapshot of how we've assisted in Polk County. So since inception, middle of 2024, we've helped about 161 businesses more, I think, since this was written up. But 71 of those were startup businesses with over $8 million in financing, created over 500 jobs in the area and leveraged over $76 million in private funds. So banks, credit unions, contributions from borrowers or investors.
Shelley.
And then I just want to highlight some of those businesses that we've helped recently in Polk County. This first one is Happy Hive Indoor Play. They utilize the microloan fund, which is a program that's meant to assist startup businesses that are less than two years of age. These funds can be used in conjunction with banker credit union financing or the regional business fund can be used as a sole source of financing if other funds can't be obtained. So this is most commonly used for working capital, equipment, build-outs, things like that. You'll see kind of their total project cost was $98,000. And RBF participation was 30,000. So they utilize multiple funding sources to obtain and remodel and furnish their space. They're located right off of Highway 35 outside of Luck. We were, they use our funds to help purchase equipment and provide working capital.
Shelley.
I don't know if anyone knows what it is, but it's a safe indoor play space and rentable party area for families with small children. So kind of cool up here in the winter, I'm sure. Next is our facade loan program. This is an incentive program that is meant to assist with revitalizing downtown commercial buildings. Each municipality in all of our counties has provided the regional business fund with a map of what
Shelley.
Consider their historical downtown. While our other loans require that the business operate out of the location, the facade loan does not. It can be utilized by business owners or property owners. This one here is in Amory, Wisconsin. Buck Creek Holdings took advantage of those facade loan funds to install new windows and doors, paint the outside of their new building, do landscaping and roofing. The space is now the new home of the financial advisory team of Edward Jones up in Amory. And then our biggest loan fund, our biggest pot of dollars is called the revolving loan fund. That is what we spend most of our time on. This loan requires participation from a financial institution. So the majority of the funds are provided by the bank. There may be other sources, the SBA, borrower contribution, grant money, things like that. And the regional business fund can participate up to 25% of a project cost based on the economic benefits of the project. This fund is most commonly used for down payment assistance, working capital needs and a lot of times blue sky costs when purchasing existing businesses as the bank can't typically finance that type of thing. The project that I have as the example here is the Grove Childcare in Milltown, Wisconsin. They are in the process of building a state-of-the-art childcare center in Milltown. The bank and the SBA were utilized for the construction costs and our funds will be used to purchase furniture, fixtures and equipment. So that center will be able to serve up to 125 children and anticipates opening this spring. That's kind of what we do. We have those flexible funds for businesses. And then we, all of our decisioning goes through a county committee and that is who is listed here. So Erin Morse is not only on our board of directors, but he is also on the Polk County Loan Committee along with Isaac Christiansen, Dan Ruck, Jeff Reed, Ned Albert, Devon Swanberg and Kirk Anderson. I'd like to thank all of those people for being there for us and making it possible for the businesses in your area to get funding and receive our assistance. Also a big thank you to Terry Howar as the Polk County CEO and other economic development partners. They're really our boots on the ground, sharing our funding opportunities with the businesses in the area. Otherwise, nobody really knows who we are. So I would be happy to answer any other questions that you have, but thank you for having me.
One question.
Sure.
How many foreclosures have you had? It's been pretty low, hasn't it?
It's been pretty low. Yeah, we are under a 2% delinquency level line with the banks. Yep.
Still under 2%. All right. Thank you.
Question, other questions, comments, concerns?
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you.
I got one.
Yeah.
What do we get for the 39,000?
Yeah. So many of the services that I covered. So we're able to keep our costs lower because of that levy, right? So our contractual services for the bicycle and the pedestrian plan, you know, I don't think, we didn't charge for writing the grant application to the state because we see that as a service that's covered under our levy. Many calls with county staff, with the EDC about a variety of projects that we don't necessarily charge for, right? So there are many conversations that we, that take place for projects and other things that, you know, we're able to provide at a reduced cost or for free of charge, right? If it's a small, you know, inquiry or, you know, question on comprehensive planning. I had a town in northern Polk County that had reached out. I'm not going to charge them to discuss comprehensive planning, right? They wanted us to do the work, then we'd have to enter into a contract. But if they have questions, I mean, we're here to be a service, but that money goes towards those costs.
Goes those free costs, huh?
Well, many, many things, but yes, that is one of, one of the, one of the aspects that we're able to provide. So.
They pay their board members cash too. It's no big deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation on the first.
Evening. My name is Rebecca Lutkey. I'm the executive director with the Wisconsin County Forest Association. And your county forester asked if I would come and just talk about the county forest system in Wisconsin as well as some specifics to your county. And so WCFA, which we'll get into a little bit, is a nonprofit that basically acts as a support network for the 30 county forests in the state. So. I do tend to move around, gesture, want it to be pretty informal, so please ask questions if you have them and then we'll certainly ask or answer questions at the end too. So the county forest system, just in general, a little bit of history of forestry overall in the state. So late 1800s, early 1900s, we saw massive land clearing and timber operations march through the state. They started in the northeast, you know, New York, Vermont, New Hampshire, and marched westward, going through the Great Lakes states and then out to the west. By 1900, Wisconsin actually led the nation in timber production, but by 1915, largely those forests were gone, cut over and those logging operations moved out afterwards. Afterwards, companies and the state and federal government tried to entice settlers to come into the state, reforest, or turn those acres over into agriculture, but largely that attempt fails. It's probably not a surprise, but we grow pretty good trees up in the northern half of the state, way better than we do corn or soybeans, where we see that obviously more in the southern part of the state. By 1927, over 4.5 million acres had gone tax delinquent at one time or another. Those settlers that couldn't make a living turning those acres over into agriculture basically abandoned those lands and moved on, so leaving those counties very cash poor, lots of delinquents. In the 1920s, so the state legislature and its incredible foresight in 1927 established the Forest Crop Law, which is basically the precursor to the county forest law that we now know today in 1927, that allowed the counties basically to acquire those tax-delinquent lands as their own and establish a program for timber production, recreation, all the things for their own use. The first county forest was established in 1928 in Langley County, so just east of Wausau. And so that means we're bumping up on 100-year anniversary of the county forest system in Wisconsin, which is impressive. We had an initial wave of four counties establishing a county forest for 38,000 acres. I apologize in front of the text. And then, as we move forward, a decade later, 1938, we had 24 county forests established, for 1.7 million acres, Polk County Forest was established in 1936, excuse me. And then, fast-forwarding to 1963, Governor John Reynolds at that time then introduced the county forest law, State Statute 2810, 2811, which we now know today. And then the County Forest Association was established in 1968, basically to help with some growing pains. So just an overall snapshot of Wisconsin's forests as today. Obviously, the green color means it's forested, so, you know, the northeast and northwest quadrants of our state are largely forested. Out here in this country, it's probably half and half. As, obviously, as we move further south and southeast, it gets more agricultural-based. And then, as far as the cover types, we see a lot of oak and hickory, which makes about a quarter of our species here in Wisconsin. Maple and birch are second, and then jackpine, and things like that cover about 10% of our forest acre. So about 50% of the state's land-based is forested, about 17 million acres. This is just a breakdown of forest land ownership in Wisconsin. The private forest, the private family forests are by far the largest chunk of family forested ownership in the state, 57%. The counties come in second with 15%. Federal government has 9%. We have one national forest in the state, the Swamigan Nicolay. The state has 7%. The private corporations, we do have some large private industrial forests, 9%, a little bit of tribal and some other private lands as well. You can see the makeup there on the map itself. So the dark, dark green is going to be the Swamigan Nicolay National Forest. The county forest is kind of the lime-ish green, and the state lands are kind of the, sorry, in the middle green color. So kind of, kind of spread out, north, south, east, west, all the things. So a little bit just overall economics of the forest industry in the state. So as far as output, the forest products industry in Wisconsin actually is the largest, the second-largest industry in Wisconsin as far as output. We are the number-one producing state in the US as far as paper. We input, or we have output, excuse me, annually of $37.8 billion. So that's a lot of value added, not only to the state of Wisconsin, but obviously to the greater US. $8.4 billion, excuse me, $8.4 billion in value added annually. And for about every million dollars in the forest products, generates about more than an additional half-million dollars. As far as employment, we have more than 1,200 companies in Wisconsin that are connected to the forest product sector, 58,000 direct jobs, which doubles that as far as other jobs that are tied to it. We rank 12th in the number of employees in the state. And for every 10 jobs in the forest product sector, an additional 11 jobs are created in the state. So getting down to more specifics about the county forest system, we have 30 counties in the state that have a county forest system established under state law. Collectively, 2.41 million acres, and that collective acres is the largest public land base in Wisconsin. Forestry is a top-three employer in 12 of our member counties, top three as far as output in 17 of our member counties. And then Adams County actually became our 30th county forest in June of 2020, so not all that long ago. And then the public ownership in Wisconsin, breaking it down, by far and away, the county forest system is the large, is the big dog. About 45% national forests in the state are about a quarter apiece, and then there's some other federal lands as well mixed in there. This is a map of the 30 counties. So the lime green just indicates a county that has a county forest system, and then the dark green is the actual acres on the landscape. Our acres, our counties range in size from Douglas County being our largest county at 282,000 acres plus. And Adams County, our newest county, is 140 acres. They're small, but they have big plans. And then you can see Polk County is 17,000-plus acres that you have in your system. So again, for a total of 2.4 million acres. So the county forest system in general is a very, very unique system to the United States as well. 5.4 million acres nationally in county forest management. 95% of those acres can be found in the states of Wisconsin and Minnesota. The difference between Wisconsin and Minnesota is actually in Minnesota, they have a slightly larger county forest program at 2.8 million acres, but those acres are actually owned by the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota basically hands over the management of those acres, but they retain the deed. Here in Wisconsin, you guys own the acres, and that's a big deal. So 2.4 million acres, you own those lands. The other 5% of the 5.4 occur in Oregon, Michigan, New York, Washington, and Pennsylvania. So the county forest system here in Wisconsin, again, it's a very, very unique system. You're the largest public landholder collectively. You own your lands. There's a very dovetail relationship with the DNR, which we'll get into. You have a very robust and active association with the County Forest Association, acting as your support network. So a little bit on the state statute itself, how we are established. So State Statute 2811 acts as the foundation for the county forest system. It's for a permanent program for county forests, for the optimal production of forest products. So that's number one, forest products, timber production, by far the number-one objective for our county forests, based in state statute, along with recreation, wildlife, watershed habitat, all the things. And it's this very multiple-use concept for the maximum public benefits. And in turn, the state compensates the counties in a variety of fashions, which we'll explain a little bit later. It also provides a reasonable revenue to the towns. So basically, the state statute says counties, you know, the state of Wisconsin says to the counties, "We want you to provide all of these things, timber, recreation, watershed habitat, wildlife habitat, all the things, and in turn, we will compensate you financially and technically." So timber production for the 30 counties collectively last year closed about $36 million in receipts, compared to state lands, which closed about 11.3 million acres. So that's three times the output that the counties put on the market from what the state does. And then also court equivalents that we put out to the market, about 810,000 cores annually. The graphs on the upper right and lower left, volume and value, really just wanted to showcase the scale of the county forests compared to state lands and the national forests. So the county lands are in blue, the Swamigan Nicolay are in gray, and the state lands, yeah, the state lands are in green. So it really tells that story of the counties are the big dog in Wisconsin as far as timber management. We by far and away put the most amount of timber onto the market for public agencies, which our contractors and our mills depend on us to do that. A little bit on recreation, nearly 1,800 miles of ATV trails occur in the state. 85% of the publicly funded trails in the state occur on county forests. So if you're a big UTV rider in the state, especially in the northern half, you're very much likely crossing a county forest. We have 8,400 miles of snowmobile trails, 300 constructed boat landings, and then a myriad of non-motorized recreation opportunities, as well as the Ice Age Trail, 1,800 miles of hiking, snowshoe, cross-country skiing, and then camping, boating, things like that. We like to say that our tourism in Wisconsin really depends on our county forests, because that's where the bulk of it occurs. Forest certification, so 27 out of our 30 counties are third-party certified, either with SFI or FSC. 20 of them are dual-certified. Six counties are only SFI-only, which you are one of them. One county is FSC-only certified. And then we have three counties that have chosen not to be certified just because of their size. It doesn't make any sense for them economically, because they're so small. The DNR actually holds the certificate for the counties, and we are audited annually. Third-party auditors come into the state, they review a subset of counties based on forest certification, which are national and global certificates. And in 2019 and 2020, we had back-to-back clean audits, and then actually, we had a clean audit for this year as well. So when you take a size, a system the size of the Wisconsin County Forest and compare it to global certification and have a clean audit, that is outstanding. And your county foresters, Brett being one of them, need to be very proud for that work. They do a lot, it takes a lot of work to make that wheel go around. So in 2010, we actually, our lead certification auditor claimed that the Wisconsin County Forest was quote-unquote "the model for public land management in the United States." So harkening back to 2011, when the state statute says, "Counties, we want you to provide all of the things, and in turn, we will compensate you," this is how they do that. This is the financial piece of how the state, specifically, majority comes through the Department of Natural Resources, financially compensates the counties. So the administration grant program, so 50%, Brent's time and up to 40% of his fringe benefits is paid through a grant by the DNR, as well as acre share loans and project loans are available to the counties from the DNR. There's a discount in state nursery. The DNR also provides AIDS to town, which is currently 63 cents an acre. So it's a direct payment for the DNR to the townships in which they have county forests in their jurisdiction. 63 cents an acre. There's a sustainable forestry grant, forest certification is in there. There's a wildlife habitat grant, Knowles Nelson Stewartship, which I think you guys have used in the past as well. And then the DOT provides a little bit of funding for county forest road aids. So collectively, all in all, plus or minus $8.15 million annually that the counties collectively receive from the state of Wisconsin, either through the DNR or through the DOT. Technically, the counties also receive a lot of technical support from the DNR. They provide 46,000 staff hours to the counties directly, and that's at no cost to the counties. And that's where Paul's time comes in. He is a county forest liaison, which every county forest has a county forest liaison, and they basically act as a county forester, but get paid by the DNR. So of the 46,000 hours annually that the 30 counties receive, Polk County gets currently 473,000, that'd be something, 473 hours annually of time. Like I said, the liaison officer, liaison foresters, Paul being one of them, is your main contact with the DNR. He's your conduit of information. He's a very critical role for guidance and just maintaining state statute and everything like that. So Brent and Paul work closely day-to-day on managing the county forests. In addition, at no cost to the counties or towards time standards, the DNR also provides assistance to the county foresters through the county forest specialists, through a forest certification coordinator, as well as forest health specialists, of a culturist, forest product specialists, hydrologists, IT, GIS, help, all the things. That's a handshake partnership thing that the DNR does provide for the county forests. However, all of that being said, it doesn't come out, it doesn't come without its checks and balances, because there is a state statute which you guys must follow, and there is a set of criterias that you have to follow with your 15-year plan and an annual plan. You know, your financial records, all that stuff needs to be checked every now and again, and the state does provide that as well. So founded in law, they need review and provide, deny annual work plans. They have to review the comprehensive 15-year plan, which you guys just revised a couple of years ago. They have to review or deny entry or exits of lands out of the county forest law and a myriad of other things. So there is, there is some checks and balances of the system itself, but basically, the main, the main part there is to ensure that the counties remain compliant with 2811. State statute, it's law, there's things that need to be done there. So this is really the relationship, we like to call it the three-legged stool, between the county forests, the County Forest Association, and the DNR. It's kind of this three-legged stool. There's a relationship specifically between the DNR and the county forests. Obviously, that's based in state statute, there's NR code, there's handbooks and agreements that go along with that. I obviously work very closely with the county forests itself. I facilitate a lot of communication back and forth, we'll get into that a little bit. And then the, I have a really strong relationship with the DNR as well. I know Paul, on a personal level, the county forest liaisons that work for the DNR are welcome in our meetings all the time, as far as continuing education and things like that. Work very closely with the state forester, as well as the state secretary's office, really acting as a point of contact and a conduit of information. So a little bit just more on the County Forest Association in general. Like I said, we're a nonprofit, established in 1968. We do have a Board of Directors, and my Board of Directors is made up of folks like you from the county forest committees and/or boards. We have a strategic plan and an operating budget. We do have committees, which our county foresters sit on, and basically act as a support network for each other. So not each individual county is off doing their own thing, but works through this association to handle policy issues or questions. There's always things cropping up that foresters will rely on their neighbor council or things like that, and we help facilitate that. As far as staff, I am the only full-time staff for the association. I do have an assistant and a technical resource advisor that works part-time for me. And then we do also have a contract lobbyist that we contract with. I, too, am a registered lobbyist, so I spent a lot of time in Madison advocating on the behalf of the county forests. Obviously, it's a big deal for us to be engaged with the state budget process because of the grants and aids in local state. It's important for us to be at the table, making sure that you, that we keep, that those grants and aids keep pace with what the need is. Our association is member and grant-funded, so all 30 counties that have a county forest are members of our association, which is a really good thing, and then we get a little bit of grant funding as well. So really, our purpose and objectives is we act as a forum for the foresters to collaborate, ask questions, get answers on policies. We provide leadership and counsel to counties. We also advocate for you, like I said, down in Madison or whatever it may be. I act as a liaison and serve as a rep, working with several agencies, not just the DNR, but the Swamigan Nicolay National Forest, WCFA. We have a close relationship with, you know, just the Great Lakes Timber Professional Association, Trees For Tomorrow. I sit on all of those as a rep for the county forests. And really, we're a champion. We want to be a champion, not just for county forests, but for forestry in Wisconsin in general. It's a big deal. You know, the Northwoods and the natural resources that we have here in Wisconsin are very important, and we want to make sure that that continues for as long as possible. So just some challenges and priorities that the association is currently working on. Markets is always going to be our number-one priority. Wood markets, in the last couple of years, we've seen a pretty steep decline in market, seen some close. So we're always advocating through the Council on Forestry, which I sit on, through the governor's office, through legislation, legislation, to get markets, new markets, back into the state or expand markets. Budgets, like I said, we're engaged in state budgets because of the grants and aids that you guys get. Local budgets are always a concern, so we try to work with you guys as much as possible on that. Balancing act between all the resource users and the timber management that occurs on your county forest is something that we engage in. We're concerned about employment, making sure that we have good foresters that work for us. for our system, outreach and education. Carbon is, is a big thing coming, that's newer, that's coming online, forest certification, forest regeneration, and then continuing staff education, networking, things like that, we, is part of our priorities. Just wanted to touch briefly on the current budget priorities that we're advocating for you in Madison, and I believe there's a handout in your packets that kind of lists that. This is, it's a, this is a one-pager that we're going to be putting in legislature, legislators' offices coming after the first of the year. We've already had conversations with the governor on our budget asks. So our current asks really are that, that, that increased funding for grants and aids. Right now, we're, we're starting to slide backwards on our grants, specifically keeping pace with the need. And so through the administration, administrator grants, sustainable forestry grant, wildlife habitat, it's important for us to advocate through that budget. And that comes through the DNR again, that's why we're engaged. And it's important to note that that actually, it's not new funding, that pot of money is there. We're just advocating for the DNR to have access to those, that's increased spending authority. Increasing in grants and aids for, as far as forest transportation infrastructure is also a big thing for us. And so that's really what we're, what we're after this, this, this cycle for the budget. I did, did want to put a plug. This is brand-new, hot off the press, but we, the association is putting out a special license plate that any motorist can be eligible to get. It's a twenty-five dollar donation annually then to our association, which will then go back into support the county forest system as far as our, you know, our association and operating costs and things like that. So that's coming in January, end of January next year. We're very excited that that will be, be coming online. So kind of breeze through that, a lot of information there, I know. But also wanted to give a shout out to Brent Cisco. He is your county forester. And then Brett, Paul Hempstead is your DNR forest liaison. And any questions, anything that you have for us?
Johnny?
Are we getting any federal help at all? I've, I've been in some steering committees down around Wasau and some of them cities, and the paper mills, paper industry had just closed up. Are we on our own on the state, or are we getting any federal?
Um, the USDA does provide some wood innovation grants, and that's a yearly thing. So there are a couple mills in the state that have received grants through them to either expand, modify, or modern, monitor, mi, modern? Be more modern, don't know that word, but anyway.
Modernize.
Thank you, that's the word, yes. So there's that. We are advocating very much more on the state level through our state legislature and through the governor's office, basically because we're, the state of Wisconsin is in very, very good shape financially. We're going into the next, next state budget with a four billion dollar surplus. And so we, we're trying hard through the governor's council on forestry, which I sit on, to get some legislation through to support new markets. We have a lot of conversations going on with mills, trying to entice them to come in. I would say in large part, more, more of our focus is state focus rather than federal.
Thank you.
So.
See an opportunity for county forests to get involved in the carbon program?
Yeah, so right now, eleven of our counties are entered into some contract in one form or another, in one stage or another, with a carbon project. Large part, it's the bigger forests. I don't think right now they're looking at any forest that's less than a hundred and fifty thousand acres. I hope eventually there will become an opportunity for smaller forests to engage in carbon. But right now, it's so new, there's so many questions, and there's just a lot. So right now, it's developing, so.
It's my understanding that privates can get in it.
Yeah, if they find the right niche. Yeah, there are some developers, and there's actually new market developers coming online every day, and they are more focused on the smaller forests, which is, which is great. Their sideboards and their restrictions and their requirements are a little bit different from what, from what the larger county forests are experiencing. So it, it really depends on the developer. If you can find a developer that's willing to work for you, work with you, absolutely, yeah, that, that opportunity is out there.
Anyone else?
Anything to add, Brent or Paul, while we're here?
See, may have questions on Polk County Forest in specific, I guess.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Take your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to number ten. There are no appointments by the county board chairman. Have some confirmation appointments at the administrator, number eleven.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have two reappointments. The first reappointment is Sue Durkop to the Indian Head Federation Library System Board of Trustees. Little background on Sue, Sue lives in Centuria. She taught middle, secondary English at Unity School for thirty-five years, and she's, she also has been on the, the board trustee for ten years, but she has a reappointment.
Okay. Rand, you had something on the board?
I'm just going to add that Sue is also the current president of the board of the Indian Head Federation Library System.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to twelve.
Need a motion to confirm?
Oh, yes, I guess you do.
So move.
Got a motion to confirm and seconded. All in favor? Over, same sign.
Chair, the next reappointment is for Gary Liliquist, who lives in Milltown. He's been on the BOA Committee since March of two thousand nineteen, and he's a reappointment back to that, the Board of Adjustments.
Will this be his second term?
He's currently on there as a second, so if one's missing, he gets called, but it'll be his second, I believe.
Thank you.
The other questions in reference to the appointment, or reappointment, I guess?
Motion to approve.
Need a motion? You got it? Either second?
A second.
You got it? Okay. Any comments? Questions? All in favor? Same sign. The main report, we're up to number twelve. The, we've got a lot moving on that committee that you formed in reference to mental health. And there's the, it's kind of culminating into a, quite a, we had an awful lot of interest the last few months. And it seems to be coming to a head with legislators, all kinds of participation from leaders in other counties, human services. I know Tanya did an excellent job of, of contacting different people, and we've had some, several meetings and some really responsive, responses from counties in this area showing the real need in northwest Wisconsin for mental health facilities, one kind or another. And it looks like it's, looks like it's coming together. So in early January, there'll be a meeting with, with parties concerned in a pretty extensive meeting. And hope to have a agenda item next month in reference to the, the result of that meeting and a good report on it. Other than that, things are moving along pretty, kind of quiet. Administrator, what do you?
Just a couple of things I put out at the committee's sale tax for November was up point eight percent or thirty-six thousand dollars, which was nice to see after five months in the red. We talked earlier in the budget process about health plans and going off for RFPs in twenty-twenty-five. We're more than likely going to go for RFPs in twenty-twenty-six. And in twenty-twenty-five, take a deeper look at our plans, our health benefit plans and redesign those before we go for RFPs. Update on the fair, the fair did agree to all items that the county board had wanted in the MOU for the grandstand. So we have a signed agreement with the, the fair board for the grandstand project. That is moving forward now. Hope to go out for bids late July, or late January into February. So this year at the fair, more than likely, there are going to be bleachers. And then next year, then we'll reevaluate the, that bleacher money and reassign that money somewhere else with that. Got an email from DNR, has the second positive test for CWD in Polk County near Balsam Lake. On their website and on our county website, you'll see the information on there. They're offering more deer tags to kill more deers, to get more testing done, to see if there's an issue there or not an issue. So if you know someone that wants to shoot more deer, that's on the DNR website, and there'll be a story on our website also. Last but not least, I'd like to thank you all for what you do for Polk County in my first year, and wish you all a happy holiday and a happy new year. And come January, we'll start the budget process all over again. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, any supervisor reports?
I would like to make sure that everybody contacted their legislatures. Like Jay said, we're working very hard on a, on a mental health situation. At here a couple, a few years, legislatures ago, I think it took, not in this past one, we did have the money to build the facility, and the legislature did not fund the money to run. So we got to make sure that we have the complete building and operation in the budget this year. Hopefully, we can use our governor and our legislature to cooperate. On behalf of myself, my brother passed away in Tucson, Arizona. He was ninety-nine last Tuesday, and his funeral was on Thursday, and I've gotten several calls from some of you people, and I sure, sure appreciate it. Very, very hard-felt situation, so thanks again.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
On Friday, the sixth of December, I attended the graduation for the CJCC, and so did Supervisor LeBlanc, Garvey, and Kelly. So it's a good turnout.
But they need recognition. I had that down, didn't make it. Very good. Anyone else? Well, happy holidays. Need one more item here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Both me and Senator adjourn, all in favor? Aye, same sign.